Wonder if everyone could take their seats, we're gonna start in about thirty seconds. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Bloomington City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Bray. Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Mariner.
Here. Thank you very much. And we're gonna go to move to public comment. We have Art Taylor and Serena Fish, up to three minutes. Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Art Taylor. I'm currently serving as, excuse me, the Chairman of the Public Service, Public Safety Community Relations Board, or the PSCRB, and I am the Chair of that, of that group. In our recent meeting last Tuesday, last Wednesday, we received a demonstration of the Axon body-worn cameras that the police, the Bloomington Police Department will be presenting to you very shortly for approval and the expenditures thereof. Being that the PSCRB, our main mission is to hear police or citizen complaints regarding the Bloomington Police Department, or those that are unresolved or unsatisfactorily satisfied for the citizens, are also our charge is to recommend those things that would help improve relations with the Bloomington Police Department and, and the citizens of the city. Our demonstration that was presented by Chief Bays demonstrated to us the benefit of having the body-worn cameras for all policemen in one, to help protect themselves, but also to protect those, those citizens that would be in, in contact with the police, therefore allowing a clean demonstration of, A, what occurred in, in the stop, or the event, or two, any, help prevent any, any complaint that could come forward by such stop or such interaction. All members of the PSCRB were present, and we saw the demonstration that Chief Bays very skillfully put on for us. The consensus of our group is that we would highly recommend that the City Council approve the body-worn cameras and would lend it our full support. Any questions?
Our, our policy is that we don't respond to public comment.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much, Mr. Taylor.
Appreciate that.
And next, we have Serena Fish.
Good evening. I'm Serena Fish. I like coming up here and being positive, and tonight I can do that on two issues. One, I'm part of the graduating class of Bloomington 101 Fall 2018. Trust me, if anybody in this city has a problem with the way things are run, they should take this class. If anybody in the city wants to know how things are run, they should take this class. If anyone in this city is interested on being on a board, on a commission, or thinking about running for something, should take this class. I really commend you and the young lady Nora Dukowitz, who came up with the idea and heads this class. Unbelievably well done. The other thing is, is I just would like to echo what Mr. Taylor said. Our board was 110% behind this, and I hopefully, all it will do going forward is making everything which we stand for transparent and neutral. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we move right along to a presentation of certificates to the Bloomington, speaking of, 101 Fall 2018 class. And if you'll please come up as I read your name, I would appreciate it. And as we, before we do this, I would like to have special thanks again to our staff, and particularly Nora Dukowitz, for making all this happen. This is obviously part of our attempt to try to make Bloomington as open as possible and open governments, so people can see what's going on. But Nora has really taken this to the highest level, and I think we should all be proud of her. But at this point, again, if you'd come forward, I apologize if I butchered your name, please correct me. Dan Berg, is Dan Berg here? Thank you, Dan. Thanks for participating, Dan. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is Shelley Braxton. Shelley, is Shelley here? All right. Next is Sarah Crowley. Sarah. Next is Michelle Evans. Michelle, is Michelle here? Okay. Want to thank Michelle as well. And then, oh, we know, she's here, Serena Fish. Thank you, Serena. Thank you. I also know she's here, Linda Foster. Thank you so much. Thanks. Louis Goslin. Okay. And Rebecca, is it Gossard?
Gossard.
Gossard, sorry. Rebecca. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next Gina Grumke. Gina, is Gina here? Okay. After that, we have Kent Gummelman. Kent. Okay. And then Gary Ift, or is it Eft? No, he's not here, for me to here mispronounce his name. Shelley Lambert. I did ask her questions, that's for sure, too. And Alyssa Mandula.
Thank you very much.
She was in, yeah, she was Ward Two. Curtis Preston. Curtis. Okay. And Christine Sewell. Christine. Carol Straka. Carol. Okay. And Jim Walters. Jim. And last but not least, Patrick Sajak. I know he's in the audience, because he's a former student. It's that IW grad. Yeah, I know. Didn't I, didn't I, I thought I called her.
No, you called her again.
Huh. I remember signing the, and seeing the proclamation. We will, I'll take a quick. Blame it on Kim, since poor Kim's not here. It might even still be in my office or something, but I do remember signing it. So we do, obviously, we have it, and we would have one produced if we didn't. But where are you? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, well, come on up. Yeah.
Come on down.
Come on, Ashley.
I'll get it to you. It's probably in my office. Sorry. Thanks. I guess not. All right. Next, we have consideration of the minutes from the October 15th, 2018 Committee of the Whole meeting. Is there a, a motion to approval, or are there corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. If everyone will go ahead and vote, then. Are there some questions, comments? Okay. Okay, the motion carries, and there are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along here to presentation and discussion of the Police Department regarding Axon body-worn cameras. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our City Manager and our distinguished police chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we're going to do is show a video. We're actually Assistant Chief Bays is gonna be making this presentation, and then we've got Chief Wheeler and Assistant Chief Donath at the tail end of this. This has been two week, I'm sorry, two years in the making, where an initial product was being tested by the department, but Assistant Chief Bays persisted, and I believe has found the best product out there. I think the use and the need for body-worn cameras is pretty much a given in today's times, exactly like Mr. Johnson shared, you know, not just for the Police Department, but for any of those that come in contact with the police. It's necessary. Assistant Chief Bays is not here this week, so what he's done is he's recorded via a body-worn camera this presentation. It's about eight, 10 minutes, and then we'll turn this back over to Chief Wheeler and Assistant Chief Donath. I will also share with you that some of the quality concerns, and it's not bad, but the quality concerns, the crispness on the audio and video is because of what we're playing it through here in the council chambers versus the quality of the body-worn camera itself. Go ahead, Scott, if you would, kick it off.
I couldn't be with you tonight, so we decided to put together a little video demonstrating the Axon 2 body cameras. Hope you find it to be a interesting and good product. A good demonstration of the camera would be seen from the perspective of the camera while officers wear it and do their job. We've been exploring this for some time now, and we're confident in the product selection for the Axon 2 body cam. This project's been uphill, to say the least, but we think we've reached the peak, and we're confident with the decision we've made to settle on the product of the Axon 2. Tonight's presentation, I prepared to highlight some of the features of the Axon 2 and the Axon Fleet body-worn and in-car camera systems and the tools available to help us do our job effectively and efficiently.
That introduction was actually recorded on an Axon 2 body-worn camera. I'd like to thank Assistant Chief Dan Donath and Sergeant Clayton Arnold for their contributions to this project. Not surprisingly, according to the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, they determined there are many things that police agencies across the country can do to improve relationships with the citizens they serve. They divided their report into six pillars. Body-worn cameras address Pillars One and Pillars Three in some way. Building trust and legitimacy is very important to be effective in a community, and appropriate use of technology and social media can have huge positive impacts to that goal. Body-worn cameras also put an independent witness at every contact. The Bloomington Police Department's been working hard at this for the last two years, seeking the right system. Council and citizens have been supportive in budget approvals, beginning in FY17, and I'm happy to announce that I've identified a source of 100 body-worn cameras and 37 in-car systems for far less than the reduced amount of 370K approved in this year's current budget. We learned a lot from this pilot. The biggest lesson we learned was the overhead created by body-worn cameras. Basically, it's creating evidence that every call an officer goes to. We had to change the way we do business and better manage our workflow. We also had to plan for an increase in Freedom of Information requests for body-worn camera video, and make sure that we fill them in compliance with the special laws as they pertain to body-worn camera video. We began our program testing a body-worn camera system that didn't meet our needs. Battery life was very poor, and there were no real tools for man evidence in addition to multiple malfunctions. Putting on a body-worn camera is easy, it's part of the whole thing. It's what you have to do at the end that makes everything so much harder. I'll tell you that the tools I'm proposing will help us accomplish those goals and mitigate some of the challenges experienced with any body-worn camera. Well, first off, the timing's right. Our current system has reached its technical lifespan and is due for upgrade or replacement at great cost. Additionally, it's not been covered by a service contract since March of 2017. The in-car system provided by Axon has numerous management tools that'll free up officers to put them on the street, and it communicates directly proprietarily with the body-worn cameras. We did field a one-car test for 30 days of the Axon mobile system, and it was received very well by the officers beyond my expectations. Officers indicated if we were going to go with a body-worn camera system, that the Axon in-car that goes with it is essential for the overall success of the program and their ability to be efficient in the management of all the evidence they would collect. And now, a few words on Evidence.com, which is Axon's cloud-based evidence management system. Basically, it helps us bring all this together in an easy-to-use package that affords us all kinds of tools to save time on the front end and the back end with regards to digital evidence. It's a secure, government-approved, criminal justice, information, security-compliant storage system, and it allows us to improve our investigations through rapid access to files that are evidentiary in value, and it also has an audit trail feature that allows us to track who accesses evidence and reviews it and provide an accountability in that respect. It also, with this plan and the cloud-based, removes some of the overhead that would be taken on by our information services for the managed security and the retention of the data that's stored in the cloud. We included the State's Attorney's Office in our pilot from the beginning. They are already fully deployed with their own version of Evidence.com for prosecutors. With this, we're able to share and exchange evidence instantaneously, increasing efficiency and productivity. What's been the impact of the Axon body-worn cameras at Bloomington Police Department? Well, Axon afforded us the opportunity, at no cost, to fully deploy body-worn cameras to our patrol officers. From that, for the last five months, I've had an opportunity to review numerous videos recorded in the field by officers, and I feel I can say that the public is accepting of the technology based on the interactions I observe. The acceptance level amongst officers is constantly growing, and we've been working together to improve workflow to decrease time spent managing the evidence, and great progress has been made and more is yet to be made. The confidence in the equipment is growing, and I believe the officers find it to be reliable. They also express a desire that if we are indeed going to have a body-worn camera program, that the Axon system is the one we go with, because of the tools afforded in almost every facet of the technology that helps to mitigate, again, the overhead. I find this is going to be a great tool for addressing complaints and improving service delivery to our citizens. And our detectives fully embrace body-worn cameras and the Axon management platform because of its time-saving ability and their immediate access to pertinent evidence on cases they're working. Also, things, minor nuances that don't make it on paper aren't lost, they're actually captured on the video for reference. How much is this going to cost? Well, I'd be remiss if I let it go at thinking we're just going to get 100 body-worn cameras and 37 in-car systems. This agreement's over five years, and during the course of the five years, there's built-in replacement for the latest and greatest technology. New cameras, day one, month 30 and month 60 for the body-warns, and new cameras at day one and month 60 for the in-car systems. Like I said, it's a fixed pricing, five-year agreement, paid on yearly. The first year will be $174,079, but that includes the $30,000 in one-time purchase equipment that we need. Years two through five will be the same cost each year at $144,876. In the event we add more officers, this plan would be scalable based on the number of officers needing cameras. The Axon system saves lots of time. I calculated that it actually saves about 4,000 hours annually, or 20,000 hours over the five years compared to our current systems. It is my hope that council will approve so that we can move forward and equip our officers with the Axon body-worn cameras, the apps, and the in-car camera solutions for the next five years.
And we're almost done. A little bit more to the video.
I hope the presentation was informative. I'm currently sitting here in front of the bank of charging docks and offload docks that are officers used at the end of their shift that are referenced during the presentation. If you have any questions that remain, I apologize again that I wasn't able to be here tonight, but Assistant Chief Dan Donath, who's been involved in the entire project from the beginning, is here to field any questions you may have. Thank you.
Before we turn it over to the Chief and Assistant Chief Donath, barring any opposition...
I couldn't be with you tonight, so we decided to put together a little video demon...
Barring any opposition, plan to bring this in front of council as an agenda item at the next meeting on November 26th. Chiefs?
I think the presentation said most of it, but the Bloomington Police Department, as you know, is committed to providing citizens of our community with outstanding service. Body cameras are proving to be an essential tool preserving evidence of crucial events, and equipment also helps ensure the trust given to us by the community is earned. Our staff, including AC Baze, AC Donath, Sergeant Arnold, and others, have worked to ensure our use of body cameras is dependable and manageable as possible. And Assistant Chief Donath here to answer any questions. If you don't have any, that AC Baze has answered for you already.
Questions from the council? Okay. If you'll let Chief Baze know that he apparently was comprehensive enough that we had no questions.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, except for Alderman Black.
Are you filming us right now?
What's that?
Are you filming us right now?
No, I am not.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
I can if you want.
Well, there are others that are filming you, so...
No, just thank you for all the hard work on this.
Yeah.
That's right. It's a pretty thick file. Thank God for that cloud storage.
Touche.
Yes. Seriously, though, thank you for all of the work on this and Pastor Landay, Chief Baze, on this. You know, we've been talking about this for a long time, and this is the diligence that staff brings to the table, that's analytical, it's got measurable results, and we ultimately ended up saving money. But when you look at it, in 21st century, we have to do body cameras, and this is a smart investment for our citizens. Just thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks. And also, obviously, for our, you know, for the citizens, for officers, for everyone. I think it was Dan Rather who once said, "The camera doesn't blink." Right. So, anything else? All right? We'll move right along to our presentation and discussion of several proposed insurance programs for private residential water and sewer leak protection, water service line protection, and sewer lateral protection. And I'm going to turn this over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Public Works Director Jim Karch is going to present this evening. On August 27th of this year, we presented to council some ideas, some opportunities, some options regarding sewer and water line protection, leak protection, and there was a handful of questions and comments from council that we needed to get answers to, and tonight is the follow-up. And we, as staff, look, and it may not be tonight, but we look for some sort of direction out of council, you know, choose this option, no option, a combination, but look for some sort of direction. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. It was my hope that maybe I could do this presentation via sewer television, and maybe I could get the same kind of no questions. I didn't think that was possible, so you get me. So, again, as City Manager pointed out, this is a continuation of an August 27th presentation that we gave. And so, what is Serveline? Why are we bringing this to you? We'll talk about this a few times, we just want to recover this again. This is a unique insurance coverage that we could not find anywhere else. We're going to show you some data. We did a deep dive into some of the data we have out there, but we have the sewer and water leak protection insurance. We also have private water line protection and private sewer line protection insurance as well that we're going to be talking about tonight. So, you've seen this before. These are the three different levels of options that Serveline provides: $500, $1,000, $2,500, ranging from $1.05 to $1.54 per month. I'm going to come back to this slide, but I want to take you into some of the deeper data and why we're going to be making some recommendations that we did. So, since the last time we got together, we dove into some of the consumption data up on the screen, which can be a little mind-numbing. I'll try to highlight some key items out of that. So what we're looking at is the leak protection doesn't take effect until your consumption is over double of what your normal average is. So, let me give you the example. I live in the city of Bloomington. My average is 400 cubic feet on my bill. That's my regular average. I can go online, I can check that, I can see my historical information out there. So if I, as a person who lives in Bloomington, hit the 800 cubic foot mark, which is double my normal average, I would qualify for the leak protection. So, the reason I say that is this data you see here is focused on how many times your normal average consumption. You can see on the right, most people fall within the two to three times their normal average consumption. That's almost 60% of the amounts that we saw. And so, that's the key takeaway from some of this. The other facet is the data we looked at was from September to March. Why? We specifically highlighted that data because we didn't want to be confused with some of the watering of lawns, filling of swimming pools, some of the different seasonal type effects that you'll find. So, we wanted to try to get a good baseline of where some of the water usage was at. So, what we found for the historical data was that the vast majority of citizens were, fell within the $0 to $100 range. If you look on that, that far-left column that really spikes up higher, we found that almost 2,000 people experienced, over the course of the time we looked at, out of 28,000 accounts, over 2,000 people in one month in September experienced rates that would hit the water leak protection amount. That's a large amount of our citizens experience these types of leak protections amount, these spikes in their service. So, as a staff, we just wanted to say the data really backs up the fact that this is an issue for our citizens. We're really seeing that. The next thing that really, we wanted to focus on, the reason why we're going to give you the recommendation that we're going to give you as a staff, is this slide. When we looked at the number of people that would be helped by the $500 amount coverage, okay, I'll go to that slide back in a second, but the $500 amount coverage is over 98%. 98% of the people that we saw that experienced these overages that would qualify for leak consumption, the insurance qualification, they, they're covered by the $500. If we went up to the $2,500, yes, we get 99.94%. And this is not always going to be the same, but the data's really kind of saying, we can really hit the vast majority of our residents for that $1.05 amount per month. And so, that's why I come back to this slide. The staff really is looking, we think we can get most people, and we can keep the costs reasonable, save that 50 extra cents per month for our citizens, and capture most of what we see of the people in the city. And so, we think that's a good data dive, and what's nice is data really helps. There are times when we came into this process, as staff, we thought, well, it's not that much more to get the $2,500 amount. Well, this seems like that might be a no-brainer, maybe we can really help people. Looking at the data shows, why do that unnecessarily? The data really kind of drove us to more of that $500 amount. So, that's where some of that recommendation will come from. Let's jump over to, how do you report this? So, a citizen, we say in September, 2,000 people have this happen. It's actually fairly simple, from a citizen perspective, anyway. From their perspective, they'll be given a local number, they'll call the local number, a claims representative will help them to be able to identify, hey, what happened? Is it fixed? When did it occur? They'll get maybe some additional data, some additional cost, hey, how much did it cost you to repair it? Once they get that information, they'll actually work with the city of Bloomington. So, the city of Bloomington maintains a lot of that data. The city of Bloomington is who gives them the usage data for them to be able to have from an average customer usage perspective. And then, what happens then is the Serveline will say, hey, this is, this is a justified claim. We're going to pay that check to the city of Bloomington, so that the citizen, all they do is pay their average monthly bill. So, it's a benefit to the citizen, it's a benefit to the city. We then don't lose the revenue that we would have experienced otherwise, and the citizen experiences a good, really a good interaction with, hey, we've been covered and this is worth it. And so, we think this is something that has value. Let's jump to their other programs. The first one, let me, let me step back really quick. I should have said this. This is an opt-out. So, the water leak protection, should the council do this? This is important. This is something that goes on everybody's bill. A person, if they don't want it, they can say, "I don't want to be part of it, I want to opt out of it." That's key. And it's key because the next part is where we're really asking for your consideration for the opt-in. For the private water line and private sewer line, that is not mandatory. There's no, nobody's saying you have to do this. We'll go into some of the other research. We did a deep dive into looking at what other insurance companies provide, but this is optional, and we see power in that because not everybody has options on how to deal with that. Some people don't have the luxury of having insurance that can cover some of their older parts of town with failing sewers. We're saying, since it's already there, let's capitalize on this as an option and put that out there. Does it fix everything? No, but we think it's at least a valuable choice if the council chooses the leak protection. So, we talk about the sewer lateral in the same way the water lateral. It really just covers up to that $10,000 amount. It helps with some of the reseeding, restoration. You can see a lot of that, but some of the keys are the 30-day wait period. The reason why there's no deductible, and how does this impact a lot of people, is we think there's benefit because, as a staff, we've seen a lot of folks impacted by private sewer laterals. That's a big one, and we've seen, and that's a very scary thing that a lot of people go into their house with that as an issue. And so, we'd like to be able, at least have an option to be able to direct our citizens to that as a program. Very similar with how a resident would report a water line or a sewer lateral break, it's very similar. They have the same phone number, they call in there if they're already into the program, they gather data again, make their assessment, and then they will pay the claim and pay a check to the resident, not the city. So, again, that one is one to where the resident has the insurance, and they work directly with Serveline. And so, that is one that is that opt-in voluntary program. So, we actually did quite a deep dive. I give some specific things from the lower right-hand corner. Troxel Insurance, they are an independent insurance company. Chad Toma there did some research, he did it in a trade magazine, then used that and put it out there, but they have that issue as well. So, he looked at a lot of these various companies. We've talked even like State Farm and others to try to find what is available. There are some insurance options available for private sewer and water. They're absolutely out there. They range, though, very much in what they cover, how much they are, and even if they're offered. Not everybody offers them. That's one of the reasons why we still stand by, if it's opt-in involuntary, why not provide it at least as an option for our citizens? You can see in the packet of information, I'm not going to go into every one of these, but we give quite a bit of data, trying to give the best information that we can for our citizens. Let's talk about outreach. How do citizens know about this? If the council chooses it, what are we going to do to make sure they know what their options are? We have flyers, mailers, Serveline, this is not their first rodeo, so they are, they have the ability to reach out to our citizens and inform and educate them. We would be, we'll talk about some of the other mechanisms that we have. We also have some frequently asked questions we can put on the internet and really try to get education as far as what our citizens can do and what they can't do. So we talk about the sewer lateral in the same way the water lateral, it really just covers up to that $10,000 amount, it helps with some of the reseeding, restoration, you can see a lot of that, but some of the keys are the 30-day wait period. The reason why there's no deductible, and how does this impact a lot of people, is we think there's benefit because as a staff, we've seen a lot of folks impacted by private sewer laterals, that's a big one, and we've seen, and that's a very scary thing that a lot of people go into their house with that as an issue. And so we'd like to be able to at least have an option to be able to direct our citizens to that as a program. Very similar with how a resident would report a water line or a sewer lateral break, it's very similar, they have the same phone number, they call in there, if they're already into the program, they gather data again, make their assessment, and then they will pay the claim and pay a check to the resident, not the city. So again, that one is one to where the resident has the insurance and they work directly with Serv Line, and so that is one that is that opt-in voluntary program. So we actually did quite a deep dive, I give some specific things from the lower right-hand corner, Troxel Insurance, they are an independent insurance company, Chad Toma there did some research, he did it in a trade magazine, then used that and put it out there, but they have that issue as well. So he looked at a lot of these various companies, we've talked even like State Farm and others to try to find what is available. There are some insurance options available for private sewer and water, they're absolutely out there. They range, though, very much in what they cover, how much they are, and even if they're offered, not everybody offers them. That's one of the reasons why we still stand by, if it's opt-in involuntary, why not provide it at least as an option for our citizens? You can see in the packet of information, I'm not going to go into every one of these, but we give quite a bit of data, trying to give the best information that we can for our citizens. Let's talk about outreach. How do citizens know about this? If the council chooses it, what are we going to do to make sure they know what their options are? We have flyers, mailers, Serv Line, this is not their first rodeo, so they have the ability to reach out to our citizens and inform and educate them, we would be, we'll talk about some of the other mechanisms that we have. We also have some frequently asked questions we can put on the internet and really try to get education as far as what our citizens can do and what they can't do. So let's talk about a timeline. Tonight, again, as City Manager pointed out, we can go by whatever timeline the council wants, this actually is looking at if we took something into February to our city council for final action, we could even do additional outreach, we could even try to do additional public meetings or mayor open houses or other items. Once the decision is made, though, it actually is a fairly rapid process, which is good, but we think the key, once the decision is made, if it's positive, is to say, we've got to have information meetings, bill insert, social media, information kicked out there, we want to do the mailers to people, we also want to work with even the neighborhood groups online, those are critical things, so that if in February the council made that decision, we could even start this in June or July. And so that's a good turnaround time that gives our citizens going into the summer months that option for this program. So with 16 seconds to spare, we will just say, this is a particular program exclusive to Serv Line, we're trying to help homeowners with the options that they have. So we'll take any questions you have at this point.
Questions of Mr. Karch.
Alderman Sage. Thank you. So Jim, and I think in the last slide you had up there, which says homeowners are responsible for their property. What I'm trying to understand is, and I need for you to help me kind of walk through some discomfort that I have around this idea of, we have areas in town, neighborhoods in town, where we have obviously a parkway, the area between the street and the sidewalk, where we have utilities that come down through there. We also then, again, in some areas, we have, there's easement or right-of-way on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk. So if you look at the total area, say between a parkway and a house, you know, the connection to a house, I don't think I'd be too far off to suggest that as much as half of that distance could theoretically be easement or right-of-way or not technically my property. So I guess I'm trying to make sure that I understand and more importantly can help kind of tell the story potentially about this program, is how I am, how I'm being asked to assume risk, if you will, over property trenches, installation, the next metro net that comes down through to install, that might do damage, you know, to my water line or my sewer line, that I really have no control over. Do you see what I'm, do you see what I'm trying to say?
Alderman Sage, I think that's a great question, yes.
There's some elements of insurance in here, right? I mean, I get that. A lot of times I'm trying to insure over actions or activities I have some measure of control over, I mean, if I didn't drive a car, I would need auto insurance. But it almost seems like I'm being asked to take on some risk for potential liability or an expense, whoever is sanctioned by the city to come down through those easements, through those right-of-ways and do work, they could damage one of my lines. So I may have some additional questions, but I'm sure that's enough to get you started.
Well, I'm hoping I give you the right answer, I thankfully put a backslide in like well after, so I had a nice graphic we can highlight up on the screen. So the point, let me make sure I'm understanding you correctly, so when we talk about the sewer lateral, let's just focus on the sewer lateral, for example, we've had instances to where fiber optic lines will come through, and they, oh, we're going to go deeper with our fiber optic line, and I'm not trying to pick on them, we just have examples where that happens, and to where they are boring in a fiber optic line and they hit the private sewer lateral up on the screen. And so when those happen, this isn't an insurance issue, that's one to where that is the homeowner's private lateral, and whoever did that damage is then responsible to repair that. And so the city has helped facilitate that dialogue in the past, we've had that from our gas company, we've had that from our utility, various utility companies, that can happen, that's a separate, good question, separate issue, because those companies that did the damage are responsible to fix it. Issues, though, with sewer laterals to where we have failed, the failed laterals, that's where sometimes we have this, we have homes built in the early 1900s that they have butt joint clays, we've talked about that extensively of our issues, and they fail, they sink, they crack, trees get in and cause those problems, those are the kind of areas that that's the insurance that where it really comes into play and is wonderful, because those instances, that private lateral is there for the sole benefit of that property. And so it's kind of like a driveway, their people are responsible for their driveway, they're responsible for their sewer lateral, and so even in the public right-of-way, people are responsible, even the parkway, people are responsible for their driveway. In that same way, people responsible for their sewer lateral, so we're trying to provide some sort of mechanism that they can then be able to have funds come back, because when you have a $10,000 hit as far as a cost, that's very difficult for some residents to pay.
Okay, so I want to be sure I'm clear here. So when we say private lateral, you're talking about everything literally from the connection point to the sewer main to where it comes into my house?
That is correct.
Even though, but again, I want to be sure for purposes of clarity here, even though you're referring to it as a private lateral, if there's large sections of that that are in the public right-of-way, potentially.
Correct.
So you're saying if there's failure there due to some utility or some action done by, you know, a city contractor, a vendor of some kind, in the public right-of-way, I would not be liable for repair to that piece of the private lateral because it's in the public right-of-way?
The city has taken that stance multiple times in the past, I'm trying to think of a reason we wouldn't, but we've tried to help residents in those cases.
So then let's expand it out a little bit. When we say we've tried to help residents, in other words, there's no cost to the resident in that situation?
That is correct. Again, let me be clear, though, in instances to where a utility company hits a private lateral, the city's not at fault, the city is not, you know, we are not liable, we're trying to help a resident be an advocate and say, if we did, we televise the line, there's times we'll televise the line, say, it's not a city issue, but you can use that video as a resident to help prove your case that this was hit by XYZ utility. So that's where that advocacy comes in for our residents, but there's no liability on the city part, and also for residents, we've seen them have their line repaired and have their, you know, go through that process and get compensated.
And that's fair to say that the city doesn't have any liability. To me, it also seems fair to say the city has some accountability, if the city has sanctioned somebody to come down through those public right-of-ways and do work, and they've done it in such a way that it damages either a private lateral or a water line into the home, right? If not for the city okaying that company to come down through that easement, through that right-of-way, regardless of if it's in the parkway or on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk, there's still easement there, there's still right-of-way, they wouldn't be doing that unless the city had sanctioned or authorized or okayed them to do that, right?
Much larger issue, we could talk about for a while, but you know, there's Illinois Commerce Commission regulations, franchise agreements, things, there's some people we can't say no to, we've struggled to say no to, many municipalities have. The city is, though, you're correct, we try to protect within the right-of-way whenever possible, for the benefit of the larger citizen group, that right-of-way, so you're right on that, I agree.
Okay. And then I'll wrap up, but again, I want to be sure, because this is important, right? I mean, this is a significant policy decision. Want to be sure I'm clear, anywhere from the connection to the main, I know we're referring to that all as private lateral, up to wherever it comes in into the home or the structure or whatever it is, whatever section of that that is in the right-of-way in the easement, if that is damaged by, say, a utility coming down through there to do some work, you know, installing again another, you know, internet provider, or replacing, you know, a sewer main down through that parkway or something like that, the city is responsible for the cost of that, of having that repaired.
I'm sorry, that's not what I was saying.
Okay, then, because I'm trying to understand, we're, again, we have a situation where we're going to have, we have parkway, we have easement, we have right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street, we have areas in town where we have easement, right-of-way on the home side of the sidewalk as well. We basically have two different stretches of easement on people's property, right?
Yes, there's grass that people mow that's behind the curb, and yes, there's some right-of-way and maybe some easement, yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, everywhere you drive down through a neighborhood, if you see a phone pedestal on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk, that's easement.
That's correct.
You know, or if I see a power pedestal or whatever utility it might be, that clearly indicates we have easement on both sides of the sidewalk there.
And typically, within the sidewalk, that's right-of-way, you know, it's a general rule of thumb, six inches back from the sidewalk to sidewalk is traditionally right-of-way, and then anything beyond that, when you see utility pedestals, those are easements, that's correct.
Anywhere there is designated easement, whether it is on the street side of the sidewalk or the home side of the sidewalk, if there is damage done to that water line or that sewer, that private lateral by a utility company or some, or you know, somebody else coming down through that work, that's where the city would step in and advocate and get that work repaired at no cost to the homeowner.
As long, the city does not maintain any liability for that work if it's done, damage done by somebody else, but we really have, we've tried to provide excellence in customer service to people to help with any information that we have that would help them with their case with the private utility company, as long as it's clear that it is not the city, not the city's fault, nor are we liable if the utility company does not pay, then yes, that is, we try to advocate where possible.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
George, why don't you add the additional comments that you shared with me, George?
I think in the amount of time that we have for this presentation, it's very hard for us to give a specific answer. First of all, there's a number of different factors. One of them would be, is it a contractor of the city, a direct contractor of the city, is it a separate entity altogether? Where it occurs, how it occurs, there's also the Illinois Torrid Immunity Act, which may have some things, some effect on it, as Jim alluded to, there's Illinois Commerce Commission regulations, there are franchise agreements, there is a number of laws that might be at play, so it's really not a very, a yes or no answer would be inappropriate. Now, we could take some time, and legal would be willing to do some research and get back with a slightly more detailed answer to some specific questions, we'd be more than willing to do that.
Well, again, I don't want to dominate the conversation here, but we've got to get down to a point where a homeowner can understand whether there's value in opting in for the water line or sewer insurance, and part of that calculus, if you will, is going to decide where, you know, where their personal liability lies, you know.
Well, and that's why I think, you know, it could make sense for us to address some of that. Potential liability, of course, would be important in any analysis of an insurance issue, but you know, in some of the scenarios, there were a few different scenarios kicked around, and the answer's not necessarily always the same, because there are a lot of factors and a lot of legal overlay, if you will, that may keep it from being a simple yes or no or maybe kind of answer. So, I mean, again, we could try to respond in some more detail, but in this kind of timeframe tonight, it'd really be hard to give you that.
But just to clarify, the homeowner currently is responsible for everything from the public water main to their home?
As a general rule, that's the case.
Right. So this would not cover, this would not cover, as Alderman Sage has mentioned, if a contractor or whatever, that may make that more complicated, but if it's because of a tree root or because it's getting older, that's when this insurance kicks in, is that safe to say?
If it's possible, I'd like to highlight two separate things. One, I put up a separate graphic for you, this is water, so water and sewer are different. Water starts from the public water shut-off valve to the house, whereas sewer goes from the tee, and so I just want to make sure to highlight that. But the positive aspect of this, let me just say this, from a resident perspective, it will be really incumbent upon them to say, what are my options for my insurance company? What are my risks? What is my risk tolerance? And this is an opt-in program, it just provides them the option. That's what's nice about the lateral insurance as we currently have it, it just provides one other mechanism for our citizens, should you choose the leak protection insurance.
Okay. Let's get the order in which I noticed people, Alderman Schmidt and then Burgess.
Yes, I'm interested in, Jim, in having you just clarify who is qualified for this. This is owner-occupied, residential only?
No, currently, this is, it is residential, and so, you know, it can be, even then with, we can talk about landlords and policies and some of that, currently, they offer this program to anybody in our residential program, which includes some rental properties. And so that, as a council, we can make a policy statement different than that, but you know, we can even make statements that say, you know, landlord rented properties have no option to be out of it, we can, you know, we can try to implement some different things, but I think for them, they're just looking at residential properties. The key for Serv Line is, it's not commercial.
That was my follow-up, that we are definitely not looking at businesses, even businesses that maybe run out of a home. I mean, obviously, if you're making candles or something, that might be different, but you know, suppose you might, I'm thinking about a situation where maybe you're living upstairs from your business or whatever.
A lot of that for us is going to be how, if it's considered a residential account, it will be covered.
All right, right.
If it's considered, which we have about 28,000 residential accounts, and so we typically don't differentiate that from a public works standpoint.
Go with that, okay, thank you.
Alderman Burgess.
So am I correct that nothing about this evening's conversation or the programs we're discussing would in any way change the allocation of responsibility that currently exists?
Correct.
So what we're talking about is different ways to manage risk that our residents already have?
Correct.
Okay. And I will tell you, after our last conversation, I got a lot of questions from residents and a lot of support for both of these programs, both the opt-in and the opt-out portion, the leak protection as well as the sewer line and water line protection, because many residents are aware of their potential risk, either because they've had an unfortunate experience or because they've known someone who has, and they very much want to find ways to manage this risk that may not be available to them. So I'm very supportive of both of these, the opt-in and the opt-out, and I think that you've appropriately chosen which is which, based on what's available and the fact that on some sites, there are other options. My only comment would be, when it comes to the opt-in program, during the education portion of it, if we choose to move forward in that, I think that we should make sure that we stress that this is one option on the market, and that they should explore their other options to make sure that they are getting the best deal for them, but I think it's important for us as a community or as a city to offer that, because not everyone can take advantage of some of those other programs, or they might find this is the better deal, but so, but I would like to make it so the residents are fully aware that this is not their only option and that they should explore those other options. But thank you for all of the hard work that went into this.
Alderman Mathie.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, so after we, you sent out the updated packet last week, I logged into the city website to check my water usage, because we had an issue at my house in March, and this is a little hard to see, but if you see the giant spike right there.
Not everybody in the audience can see it, but that's a big spike, yeah.
Yeah, where we went from roughly 700 cubic feet of water to 6,000 in March before we figured out where the leak was and what was going on, you know, I definitely see the value of the, especially since this is, that's the opt-out portion that we're talking about. If people do have coverage, like Amelia was talking about, which I've talked to some of the insurance agents in town, and some of the, even our local companies offer coverage that would cover the leak protection and the pipes themselves, and some don't. So it's, you know, everybody needs to check with their coverage, it might already be part of your homeowner's insurance, so it's, I think everybody should look at this, but you know, I think that this is a really cool potential program that we put together, and personal experience says that I'm staying in the program, so.
And also to highlight that, toilet leaks are the most common thing that you see out there by far, and Public Works, we really do encourage people, once a year, I've been victim of that myself, the leaky seal, check that once a year, we actually have kits at Public Works that people can use to take their place and test them as well.
So are we, in terms of the, let's start with the opt-in, are we generally, excuse me, the opt-out, are we generally in agreement with the $1.05 recommendation if that were brought? And obviously, this is not necessarily committing us, we're just giving staff some direction as they're putting together proposals.
Right, along with all of the public outreach that Jim has laid out.
Yes, of course, absolutely, with the public outreach. And what about the opt-in portion? And what about the opt-in portion? Are we also okay, at least with them bringing that, that, again, this doesn't commit us to voting for it, but to bring us a proposal as presented? Okay, I think you have direction, okay?
Thank you very much.
And thank you, council, and the very hard work that the staff has done. And thank you, Mr. Boyle, for weighing in for our legal issues, thank you. And at this point, we move to presentation of property tax consideration. And we have a brief presentation by Mr. Gleason. And this is related to public safety pension funding. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor, council. A quick presentation, but could be a little bit longer discussion comments out of council. It is property tax levy season, as all are aware. Municipalities have to set the rate around mid-December, where it's adopted formally and then recorded at the county level. This is a quick presentation to discuss some options and considerations. First public discussion on this. Currently, our rate is around 1.339. And I think, let me back up just one step, and it's not in the slide, but just share, on the property tax bill, the city of Bloomington's portion is around 15% of the total property tax bill. And our current rate is the 1.339 that I just did mention. And that's an option, is to maintain that current rate. Or another option for consideration is to set the rate to cover the entire public safety pension obligation that we have as a municipality. Again, the options are to maintain the current rate at around 1.339, or to set the rate to cover the public safety pensions. And if we were to do that, it would increase approximately 9.8% to a rate of 1.47, up from the 1.339. Rate to remain below that of the Town of Normal, including their recently proposed decrease. Normal funds their entire public safety pensions via the property tax levy. What are the impacts? If this was to be considered and approved by council, the impact to a homeowner with a home valued at $165,000 would increase their annual property tax bill, again, for the city's portion, by about $78. Utility tax considerations. Ordinance 2014-38 was passed in 2014, amending the utility tax rates to address the anticipated public safety pension funding gap. Nearly $2.5 million in annual revenue increase has resulted. These funds have been restricted for public safety pension funding use. If a property tax levy is adopted, which fully funds the public safety pension needs, the utility tax ordinance would be, will be amended prior to the adoption of the FY 2020 budget. It would have to be. Again, going backwards just a little bit, in 2014, council made the decision, knowing that the property tax levy was not going to fund the entire public safety pension obligation to fill that gap. You raised the utility tax to fill that gap roughly 2.5 million. On the front end of that, when the obligation wasn't the 2.5 million, we actually built up cash reserves of a little bit more than $5 million. So when the lines crossed, we could pull from those reserves and still continue to fund the gap with the utility tax. Now, those lines cross where something will have to be done by council, somewhere around 2023 range, where the funding from the utility tax will not fund the gap that's being provided by the property tax levy for the public safety pensions. Again, this is not, having the public safety pensions funded entirely by the property tax levy is something that many municipalities do. It is something that the Town of Normal does. And again, in bringing this forward as even a consideration for council, wanted to point out that if this was in fact approved by council, our property tax rate would still be slightly less than the Town of Normal's. This is sort of the schedule of events. Next meeting on November 26th, the rate will be brought forward to council as a proposed rate. If there is absent sort of direction from council tonight, I will likely have an agenda item next week that will have an option A and an option B. And it would be the current property tax rate, or it would be a property tax rate that's increased to the amount, the 1.47, that would cover the entire public safety pensions. And again, if that ended up being adopted at the council meeting in December, then something would have to be addressed with the utility tax 2014 ordinance. And that would be done prior to the adoption of the 2020 budget. So it'd be something that would be, discussion to be addressed somewhere in February or March of next year, in a couple of months. And also, Finance Director Scott Rathbun is available if there's any additional questions or comments of us. Thank you.
Questions, thank you for that very succinct and to-the-point presentation. Alderman Schmidt, I can tell is aiming for her. Oh, Alderman Mathie beat you, okay.
It's rare that I beat carrying the budget button, but I got it this time. So we're talking about, there's two separate parts of the funding for the pensions. We have the kind of the paying as we go along for our obligations this year, for staffing that we have in place. And we're talking about making back payments as well, because we have the Illinois law that says we have to be fully, or 90% funded by 2042. So we kind of have those two pieces in play at the same time. So this is talking about putting both of those pieces into a single number. That is, gives us a path forward, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, and actually, I'll speak to that additionally. 2041, 2042 municipalities are expected to have the Article III and IV pension funds, police and fire, 90% funded. This council or past council made the decision to fund at a 100% level. So that could be a part of this discussion as well. That 1.47 rate that would fully fund the public safety pension obligations is funding at the 100% that council chose, you know, that's the target for council for 2041.
Okay, and does this take into account, part of that adoption of the 100% showed an accelerated rate schedule where the backwards-facing, you know, the catch-up payments we're making were accelerating year over year? Is that, that's correct, Scott, right? Where the payments, where the back payments we're making kept getting bigger and bigger as we went along? I mean, does the, does the 1.47 take into account that? Or as that rate level keeps increasing, does the 1.47 number need to change along with that number? Just asking for clarity.
It would need to change. What the 100% funding level, it would be based on the audited amount for next year. And as that pension obligation increases, so would the funding requirement. And to your question, so would the property tax rate also have to increase to meet that obligation annually. But that's no different than what we see is going to occur, that the action that council took in 2014 with the utility tax is not going to cover the gap somewhere around 2023.
Yeah, and this seems, from everything that I've been reading, this is the same problem that every municipality is facing, the same, how do we make those payments for, to make up for what happened in the past, while still continuing to make our payments for what's going to happen in the future at the same time? It's, it's like a two-sided, you know, sword on that one, as it was. So, okay, thank you for providing that clarity.
Alderman Schmidt.
I wondered, Scott, if you might be able to, in a, next time we discuss this, provide a comparable, were we to retract the utility tax? So we've got like the average $78 on a $165,000 home. What is an average utility tax annualized? So if they're paying out $78 more in their property tax, what might they be saving if we were to, you know, to change?
We've, we've actually calculated that, we've recalculated. We use an assumption of an approximate $250 per month entire utility tax bill across the board. And on that, for, excuse me, for one moment.
On that $250 monthly utility bill for a residential customer.
Thank you, not the utility taxed $250, which is what I thought you said.
And the tax would be, on that example, $12. And then, if, pardon me?
Per month.
Yes.
Yes.
Go for it, Scott, finish.
So 100% reversal, so the 2.5 million, if we did 100% reversal, it would save $4 on that tax bill. On the $12, on the 250, we recalculated after the conversation we had. So $250 total tax bill, approximate taxes, total taxes, $12. Of that, $4 is associated with the tax increase related to pensions.
So $48.
Per year, yes.
Right, so, okay, so 78 more versus 48. No, I'm asking about the utility tax, not the bill.
You're putting, Alderman, how much, go ahead and put your thing. You're just, you're just happened to point out how much it would cost per month extra.
650 a month, if, on the $78 increase on your tax bill, that's 650 a month. And if we, if we.
Oh, you're doing it a slightly different way, okay. My second question is one that has to do, and maybe somebody up here knows the answer. There was a referendum for the property tax, state-level property tax, was, you know, do we increase property taxes in the state to pay for pensions? And I don't know what happened with that, and I.
It was defeated massively.
It was defeated, okay, all right. Because I'm also worried about what's going to happen with the changes that are likely to come to us through the state. You know, and are we, are we exceeding something that might come our way from the state? I guess is what I'm worried about.
Well, it's, it's hard to second-guess what's going to happen with the state. So we're just addressing, you know, the current need with an eye towards the future. And right now, we have $8.2 million in the levy that's dedicated to the public safety pensions. And the 2020 need is 11.1 million. So we're already exceeding the amount that we're bringing in from utility tax. So we're eating, we're going to start eating away at that reserve this year, this coming year.
Alderman Sage and Burgis. I think Amelia had her light on next, Mayor, so she can go. Wow, chivalry is not dead.
Thank you. Just a question with regard to the 2040/41 deadline. I've heard some, I don't even remember where I heard it, but I've heard some indication that many municipalities are not on track to fund at the statutorily required levels. So that that, those deadlines might be changed by the legislature to reflect the reality that many communities cannot both fund their current responsibilities and play catch-up. Do we, is that all just speculation? Is that an actual possibility of something that we might be able to take advantage of as well, if we wanted?
It's actually been, Article III and IV were created statutorily in the early 70s. And that 30-year requirement to fully fund, that can has been kicked down the road almost from day one. So while, you know, I can't predict what may happen in the future, that definitely has been the history.
Alderman Sage and then Miloumbway. I think, no, I was kidding. So, so I want to be sure I understand, Scott. We're going to, we're going to charge, by way of the property tax, $6.50 more per month, if I'm, if I'm understanding this conversation over here. But we're going to give them $4 back, if you will, on the utility tax side. So at the end of the day, and again, we'll talk about the size of the numbers here in a second. You're still going, it's still going to cost more doing it this way. Even though it would appear to be miniscule, it would still take more money out of the taxpayer's pocket to do it this way.
Yes, sir, using those assumptions, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Because again, I think sometimes what gets lost in the conversation up here is that probably for most of us, if not all of us here on this platform, a net of $2.50 a month is, doesn't seem that significant. However, if you begin to, as I've seen in some of the local media suggested, we may have, it sounds like Unit 5 is going to come back and propose to increase, you know, their, their property tax rate as well. Which is kind of scary, because again, if I understand, that's to pay teachers' salaries, which that, that's, kind of takes funding to a whole nother scary level for me. So what I'm concerned about then is the $2.50 here, the $3 there, you know, with every local taxing body now scurrying, trying to cover deficits and shortfalls, the cumulative effect this has on taxpayers. Again, that's probably not at the front of most of our thinking, or personally, or conversation we have up here. But it's important to recognize, $4, $6, $8, that's, that's real money to some folks who live here in the city. So that, that's part of the concern I have. The other thing is, is I wonder, Scott, if you could walk me through some of the assumptions that have been made in terms of looking at the viability of this going forward. Here's, here's a couple of assumptions, or I guess speculation that I have. I'm concerned we hear, when I look at the assessors' reports each month, we have not a lot of new construction going on. So, so if the property tax income is not going to continue, or grow by new construction, then that means the focus, at least in my mind, remains then on stuff that's already built, okay? And, and if, if what I'm hearing from people around the community is that, that we have prices that are being decreased for homes in the community, then at some point, and again, I talked a little bit about this in our meeting, I think my recollection is, it takes about three years for those decreased EAVs to start to show up in the levy. So while we don't see it right away, if in fact, we have properties that have, have lost value and are losing value, then in a few short years, our levy will be going down unless something happens with the tax rate, okay? Am I good so far? So, so how are we, how are we considering, how are we factoring in? How, how are we assuming a possible, or I would say a likely, decrease in, in, you know, EAV for properties going forward? And the impact that has then on the amount of property tax that we collect? You know, again, shifting all of the funding of, of, of public safety pensions to the property tax.
I think how I would answer that is, we have the luxury, if you will, annually, adjusting the property tax rate as council deems appropriate. If the decision was made to fund the entire public safety pension obligation through the property tax rate, we do that. If what you are commenting to actually becomes reality two, three, four years down the road, and the decision of the council, or me and staff preparing whatever fiscal year budget might be at that time, we can adjust. We could go back to something that is identical to what we have now, or look for other options to try to lessen that burden on somebody paying a property tax bill.
Okay, so just in terms of some feedback, because I'm sure that's what you're looking for. Again, I'm uncomfortable with, with even, for some mechanism, some proposal that really is, is not a wash from a taxpayer perspective. You know, if we're going to take more out of the pocket for, on the property tax side, then something that is equivalent, you know, in terms of give-back, you know, to the taxpayers in the same amount, so, thank you. Alderman Miloumbway.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I should, I should have gone first, because you said exactly what I was going to say.
Maybe I should, I should've gone first, because you said exactly what I was gonna say. Yeah, so I, I also have the same concern, especially when I heard about the school district, I think it was Unit Five, talking about the possibility of increasing property taxes by two-hundred dollars. I think that's the number that was used, so that, you know, I, as I start to think about that, and I, and I think about, you know, that's just a school district, I don't know what else others might do. I mean, we have several taxing bodies, and I'm worried about the cumulative effect of all those increases. So that's something to, to think about, that kinda weighs on my mind. And, you know, I, and I know, sure, people can plan, you know, ideally, but when that tax bill hits, you know, it's, it's different when it's thirty dollars as opposed to two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty, you know, so that's something that I always consider very carefully. The other thing, too, I, you know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you know, I understand, you know, in, in some circles, where most people, you know, think that the utility tax is pretty regressive, right? But there's also the aspect that I think it spreads things amongst a lot more people, right? Would that be correct? Yeah. Because, you know, when you think about it, it's not just, you know, property owners who use police and fire services, but it's, it's a lot of people, including folks who drive into town, you know, for two, three, or four days. So I, I'm always a, you know, a proponent of, you know, spreading it as much as possible to a lot more people to lessen the burden on any one particular individual. Yeah, and I, I had another, something else that I was gonna say, but I'll, I'll just stop there.
Do you want to follow up?
Well, yes, I want to be sure I understand what you, because I think you make a good point. What you're suggesting is, is we have a certain number of property owners who pay property tax, who, as opposed to then, that number plus other folks who come into the city...
Right.
...to purchase, you know, goods, services, that type of thing, that also provide a portion of that sales tax going to those, to those public safety pension fundings. Now, so that's what you're talking about, you're saying we're in effect shrinking the size of the, of those who contribute to...
Right.
...to public service pension funding by going to the property tax only.
Right. And the other thing that I was gonna say, I, you know, I, you know, I also read some, you know, some, some stuff about this, and, and I, I think, and I hear many municipalities are grappling with this issues, these issues, and they're going to, I mean, they're trying just about everything that they can. I mean, we've used utility taxes, and I've heard of others using sales taxes, you know. I'm not suggesting one way or another, but I'm just saying there's many other ways to do that, while I understand that there, you know, traditionally, people have used property taxes, but I think the magnitude of the issue has forced people to, to kinda think outside the box and use different, you know, different instruments to be able to accomplish their goals. So that's something that, that's also weighing on my mind as well.
Okay. Alderman Hellman and then Alderman Black.
Thanks. And David, I appreciate your concern related to the economic diversity of our community going forward. The only positive I see in where the money comes from, whether it's utility tax or property tax, is our property taxes are, affect our, our income tax, whereas the utility tax doesn't. I mean, I know seventy-eight bucks a month might not, you know, pushes into a lower tax bracket, but it does have a, an impact on that.
Seventy-eight a year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I was saying...
I think you said seventy-eight a month.
No, I'm sorry, a year, but, but property taxes are a write-off versus the utility tax, which isn't that.
Unless you're a renter. If you're a renter, you don't get to write off your property taxes.
No, I understand.
Right. I mean, that's what makes it, I mean, pretty much all of our options are some version of regressive. I think I would say that. Alderman Black.
Thank you. So I guess I'm not hearing overwhelming support for an increased levy this evening, and so maybe the two options aren't necessary. As I'm listening to the discussion, I can't help but think about the, the lack of dealing with the problem of pensions from previous years. And here we sit in a position, several years out, from a, a future projected deficit, and we have the opportunity to take some action. And if it's not this, then what will it be? What, I guess my question, you know, I guess I don't quite see the argument that we're shrinking the number of people who are paying into the pensions, you know, about half of Ward Seven rents, and that they pay that not directly through property taxes, but, you know, through their rents and such. But I'm very sensitive to the perception that, that property taxes are too high, and people don't want to move to Illinois because of the high property taxes. And even if it's, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there, the story's gonna be Bloomington Council hikes property taxes. And, and, you know, I don't think that that's fair, but that people like their clickbait. So I guess, if it's not gonna be this, then I would challenge us to find five for something else, whatever that might be.
Okay. And we're not going to this evening, but Alderman Mathie.
I was gonna just comment the same thing that Scott did, that this idea that the pool of people that are shrinking doesn't make sense to me either, because, you know, the, it's, it's based on electricity consumption, so people coming into town aren't necessarily going to stop somewhere and buy some electricity as they come through. They're gonna shop at businesses and stuff, and so those businesses are already paying property tax baked into their rent or lease payments, or their, same thing with renters and stuff, too. So I guess I'm just confused by this idea that we're shrinking the pool. The one thing that I do think, and I thought I heard Scott say, though, is that next year, we are already upside down and gonna start dipping into the reserve fund. So, you know, that this is a, you know, a possible way to stop already dipping into, you know, we already, we're already seeing next year, we're gonna be upside down, right? That's, that's the thing. So again, where do we go from there? You know, this is one possible out on that. I'm not sure if it's the only one, but, you know, there's some interesting conversations need to be had.
Okay. Alderman Sage.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief. I'm always fascinated whenever we have conversations like this, and we say, well, what are we gonna do? Where's this gonna come from? And I never hear any conversation about, maybe it's time to, again, prioritize spending and say we're going to decrease some city services that we do, or change the delivery of those services to reduce those costs and reallocate that money over to cover public safety pension. It, it, again, I'm always not surprised at this point, but I'm always disappointed where it seems like the conversation is always, well, where are we gonna find more revenue to do this when we know we have a shortfall? And never about, maybe we need to look at reducing our current expenses and reallocating some of that money to cover the public, you know, pension funding.
Okay. All right. City manager, Lee Sin.
I guess a couple of, couple of quick comments. This was not, I guess, a sales pitch on the part of staff at all. Just was providing a menu of options, and on this menu, there was two. And if it looks like the current rate is something that will advance at the next meeting as the proposed rate, that's fine. Alderman Mathie, you're right. That five-point-four million dollars worth of revenue surplus that was built in, I'm sure by design, in the 2014 adoption of the utility tax rate adjustment, we are going to be dipping into that, and that trend will continue. And again, that line crosses somewhere around 2023. So, and then it was premature, really, to talk about how the FY20 budget preparation shaping up, but to Alderman Sage's comments, that internal look, where we're trying to find ways to save money, be more efficient, not put the entire burden on the backs of the taxpayers that day is here, and excited about talking about how FY20 is shaping up after the new year.
And then, I think we should also be clear that we, it's not as if we didn't have budget cuts in our last cycle, although you weren't involved in that. We had about a million dollars just because we're not picking up bulk waste. And, you know, that's, that was a service cut. I still get hear people complaining, why didn't we do that? Why didn't you just charge us the extra seven dollars, or whatever it would be, in order to do that? And some wanted it, some didn't. But at this point, it's water under the bridge. But so, but we needed to do that just to keep our heads afloat, because we had increased costs, and we didn't replace people. We're down about a hundred-and-fifty people from about eight or nine years ago. But that doesn't mean we can't always, we're always looking to save money, and if council members or others in the community have some realistic options for doing that, I'm sure we're all ears. Because I don't think anybody really likes to pay taxes. But I believe it was Thomas Jefferson who said it was the price of paying for a civilized society. But I think that we're, we're talking about something much more concrete than that. But anyway, I think you got the feedback that you needed.
He does.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have on presentation discussion of future agenda topics, and I'll turn that over.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Do we have a slide on this, Scott? Do not. Okay. At the upcoming November 26th meeting, we will have, oh, Bloomington, the Airbnb hotel motel tax is gonna be on the agenda for council to consider. And what this would do is, of the hundred-and-ten-plus websites that offer Airbnb options in the town of Normal and the city of Bloomington, the hotel motel tax that we currently have in place would be applied to that as well. Town of Normal is taking action on that this evening. That's something that both Mayors and Pam Reese and I have been working on, and will come in front of our council on November 26th. Item number two is gonna be the proposed property tax rate, and that will be similar, if not identical, to the current rate. And then also, talking about money, this is bond refinancing is gonna come in front of council, and what we will be doing with an opportunity, if approved, will save a little bit more than a million dollars. And that is not extending the length of the bonds that are up for consideration. That's taking the same amount that we are currently paying, and it will drop off even sooner, and will realize a little bit more than a million dollars in savings. And then also, we're targeting next week's council as an agenda item. Alderman Smith had a council initiative on the Transportation Committee. That'll be an agenda item next week as well. Pushing out to December 10th, we'll have the tax levy adoption and other items, I'm sure, but they just haven't hit the December 10th agenda yet. And real quick, Tobacco 21 is another item that the Town of Normal's taking action on tonight. I believe if approved, it'll be contingent on the action that this council may take if it becomes an agenda item. I think ISU students have been a part of this, and they are going to speak at the November 26th, our November 26th council meeting under public comments. Won't be an agenda item, but under public comments, I think they're gonna share their thoughts, which is a Town of Normal item that is up for consideration this evening. Again, partnership between the two communities, working on items. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. And just so that, just to clarify, also, I received a letter from Jim Artis, Mayor of Peoria, fairly lengthy letter urging us to consider this, you know, Tobacco 21. Alderman Sage.
Just a question, Tim. Do we have any, any feedback or any idea where the county is on, on this, you know, buying tobacco, you know, at age twenty-one or above? I mean...
Yes, I do. And I don't think it's something that's gonna come in front of the County Board.
So I want to be sure I understand, and even if Bloomington and Normal would, would pass this, people who are eighteen to twenty-one could go outside the town and city limits and purchase tobacco?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we move, is that, I'm sorry, was that the end? I'm sorry.
I've got more.
Oh, you've got more? Oh, okay, I apologize. There was a pause there, and I didn't know.
Under the city manager report, do we have a schedule of events? Come on, Scott, you're killing me. All right. And then the next item is actually Alderman Mathie. His council initiative, it's actually very exciting, something that we've talked internally amongst staff, something that I've been involved, you know, in a previous position. Alderman Mathie.
So, yeah, when Emboka and Kim and I were, and the mayor, were all at the Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago, you know, Emboka and I were walking through the vendor hall, and we, we came across a booth for the, the Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology, and we started talking to them about this new program they have. It's part of a smarter Illinois program to help cities to upgrade all of the lighting that they use from traditional HID bulbs to new LED bulbs. And there's a, it's, there's a, the program has already been bid out by the state, so we don't have to worry about taking things to bid. And the program, you know, they, they talk about, when you take into account the twenty-year lifespan of LEDs, the significantly reduced electricity that they use, you know, there's as much as a fifty percent savings every year in electricity. So when we talk about trying to find money, and we talk about the thousands of bulbs that we're paying for every month across the city, most cities that have undertaken a program to swap out their bulbs with LED bulbs have seen a four-year return on their investment, and then they're paying a significantly lower electricity bill every month. There's also options, when you look at these new light bulb, these new fixtures, because the bulbs are so much smaller, to embed things in them such as wireless access points. You know, when we talk about things like, right now, we pay a, a, an individual from the Water Department who drives up and down every street in the city of Bloomington every month to read the water meters as they drives by. You know, we could actually potentially have real-time reading of water meters, or once an hour, or things of that nature. So, you know, there's, if we had a more ubiquitous wireless program for, for city use across this, you know, our area, we could potentially just deliver a whole lot of new services to people at a significantly reduced cost, as well as pay less for electricity every month. So, you know, I wanted us to start going down this, this path of exploring and getting more details about the program. I know that the people who run the booths are always exuberant about their ideas and concepts, and I just wanted us to start the process, to start doing our own fact-finding, look at the, you know, I don't know exactly how many lights that we're currently paying for, right, across the city, is that number, I suspect it's in the thousands, but, you know, I don't know what that number is, so, and I'm sure that between Public Works and, and facilities maintenance, that they actually have a better idea. I don't know what we're paying per month, but if there's a possibility of saving fifty percent on electrical bills for all that sort of stuff, I think it's worth spending some staff time on. So that's where I'm coming from.
Perfect on the nose. Wow. It's like you practiced. And even if you practiced, to get it down to the very second, Jamie.
I wrote it out.
Holy cow. Wow. Okay. I guess at this point, we have about five minutes for the council, but essentially, I guess the question would be, are we interested in pursuing this? I see lots of heads nodding, but I'm gonna go to Alderman Black and then Alderman Hellman.
Yes.
Okay. We love brief answers. Alderman Hellman.
This may be too early for this question, but how does this work with Amaran, that currently take care of our light poles?
Isn't it possible that we buy them? I'm sorry.
I think that there's a lot of possible options there. I mean, and it's worth, you know, we, I think we need to engage in a conversation with Amaran.
Yeah.
So, and find out what their answer is. I mean, this is, you know, Amaran was there at the, at the conference as well, presenting, and they were in some of the Smart Cities presentations I was in, so both Amaran... So both Ameron and ComEd, representing the northern part of Illinois, have a lot of various programs to help municipalities, businesses, and residences save money by switching out to light bulbs. I'll give them a brief plug, if you go to ameronillinois savings dot com, you can actually buy LED light bulbs for your house that are $2 or $3 per bulb. And if you're a business, you can sign up there too, and you can buy like exit signs for your business, which are required to be on 24 by 7, and they make new ones with LED bulbs that use 80% less power. How's that for a commercial too?
Yes, okay. So I think, do we have any opposition to having this as, as an item? I think we've got direction. Yes. Mr. Gleason?
Do you mind if, we have no committee of the whole meeting in December, we have two council meetings on the 10th and the 17th. Would you mind if I took the committee of the whole meeting in January to make a presentation back to council? That would include, you know, the total number of lighting that the city owns, what the presence is of Ameron in the community, and then what a lighting audit might look like and an approximate cost.
Sounds good to me. Any objections?
Nope.
Don't, seems like... Oh, we have a question from Alderwoman Painter, do we know about the situation with Corn Belt? No?
I, I don't know how a cooperative...
If there are other issues with the co-op?
Yeah, I have no idea how Corn Belt would work.
Okay. Just to see, as part of the presentation in January for the committee of the whole, and I know we're all gonna be heartbroken that we don't have a committee of the whole meeting in, in December, but, anyway. It's Scott crying. At this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Whoa, that was quick. Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second? Second by several people. Alderwoman Schmidt, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.